Is it going to stream on Channel 3 also, or no?
It should, yes.
I don't see it there yet.
Not yet. Give me one second.
And I'm trying to dial in as a member of the public. You haven't opened that up yet, correct?
You should be able to get in there with the meeting idea that's on the page.
Let me try again.
Yeah, we were having some problems with the Zoom link.
Okay.
Did you use the new link, Chris? There is a problem with the one that was up earlier today.
I'm using the one from 5:30 an hour ago that Alex sent and Bonnie responded to.
So, Chris, you're watching this on YouTube?
Oh, you guys were live.
There we go. We're live on Channel 3 and then we're also, I don't yet see the thing on another computer though. I'm dialing it from a second computer to check it.
Cool.
But we are live, so watch what you say.
Okay, question. When you make a motion, you have to raise your hand like the agenda?
Yes, that's what we want to do. If you want to speak while someone else is talking, raise your hand and then the chair will direct the traffic.
Yeah, except I can't see anybody but Trevor and John and Chris Marks.
Can you click on the button that shows a whole bunch of little dots? Will it bring up more people?
Yeah, I still don't have any members. I've got Trevor, I've got Justine, I've got Richard, Bonnie Blue, Patricia Salazar.
Is it all along the side, like in a row?
No, now it's in a box, a square box.
You have to click the little arrow on the right down there and it scrolls you over to the other people.
We are live, though, you guys.
Well, that's good, but.
Just letting you know.
Okay.
We want to make sure it works for.
Yeah, I've got a different group of people. Okay. So I have to scroll back and forth to see people.
If you have a split screen view with the agenda on one side and people on the other side, there's a dividing line in the middle and if you make agendas smaller, it should allow you to see more people.
We don't have that.
Or you can grab the corner of the window that shows the people and make it bigger.
Ah.
And then you can fit more people.
Ah, there we go.
Good.
And I just want to clarify, what are we using for the hand raise? All I see is a reaction thumbs up. Is that it, or clap? Oh, physically here, okay, that's easy enough.
Not a virtual way.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we're ready to go, I guess. We'll give it a try. I'm going to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission adjourned regular meeting of April 6, 2020. And a couple of remarks I've been asked to make before we. I hear somebody talking before.
Someone's got Channel 3 online.
Obviously, this is our first attempt, the city's first attempt to hold a virtual meeting. We've got a relatively short agenda tonight and, but we want to show the community that we can employ technology to continue the city's business safely. As you can tell from the way we've begun, this is a first venture, so please bear with us, particularly for those of us who are of a certain age and perhaps more technologically challenged. All of us, all the city staff, all the participants are participating from remote locations by video conferencing. We can see each other and we can see the public online. All votes are going to be taken by a roll call vote. The members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting, one word. At the screen, you can, if you aren't already there, I'm not sure how you would be hearing me, but if you're at that screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item. You will only be able to speak if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. And Patricia Salazar, the commission secretary, will call on those who've signed up to speak when the item is called. But you must sign up before the item is called by me because after that point, no further signups can be allowed. If you've signed up, please remain online and be ready to speak when Patricia calls on you. Commissioners, probably the most difficult part of this is we have to make sure that only one person is talking at a time. So if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand. I'm going to go through everybody at every opportunity and give everybody a chance to say what it is they want to say. You'll be given every opportunity to say everything you want to say. You just might not be able to say it exactly when you want to say it. But we have to make sure that only one person is talking at a time. So having said that, I'm looking at black screens for almost everybody and can't see any of the of the other commission members there. Up there, I got Steve. Yeah, let's see here. I'm trying to adjust this in some way. Okay, I've got a few more people there. All right, we'll make it work. Patricia, I think we're ready for the call to, for the roll call. Can you hear me, Patricia?
Yes, I'm waiting for it to show up live. There we go. Commissioner Marks.
Present.
Commissioner Urey.
Here.
Commissioner Wile.
Here.
Vice Chair Masa.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we're ready now for the approval of the agenda. I think to try to simplify this, I'm going to make the motion myself if you bear with me. I'm going to move that the agenda be approved as presented by the staff with item 3B7 continued to April 20th. Item 4A continued to April 20th. Items 4B, 4C, and 4D all continue to a date uncertain. Item 4E continued to May the 4th. Item 4F, 4G, 4H, and 4I all continue to a date uncertain. And 5B and 5C continue to a date uncertain. Can I get a second on that?
Quick question. Are we canceling number 3B8 based on the email from Richard Malika earlier today?
I think that there was further from Trevor and Richard that because the official signed formal document granted a one-year extension that we actually have to hear the item tonight. We can't just let staff say that, oh, no, it was two years. Is that correct, Trevor?
Yeah, we'll pull the item and we'll discuss it at that point.
Sounds good.
And what does that mean?
We hear a second?
I'm looking for a second, yeah.
I give you a second.
I was waving my hands to try and get it recognized. Do I have to be?
Yeah, I can't see. Now I can see you, John, but I couldn't at the time.
I can see all the commissioners too. I'll say something if somebody's.
Okay, so I need a second. I got a second already and let's call the roll.
You want to listen, John, first?
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Wile.
Yes.
Vice Chair Masa.
Yes.
Commissioner Urey.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving on to the next item, which is the report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda was properly posted on March 27, 2020, and the amended agenda was posted on April 3, 2020.
Thank you. That takes us to the next item, Patricia. That's item 1A, the update on the planning department's operations during the COVID-19 emergency declaration.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our first virtual meeting. I'm Bonnie Bloom, the planning director, and I just want to discuss briefly the way the planning department has transitioned to remote operations to keep city business going while we are all staying safely at home. Planning and code enforcement staff are working remotely. Staff is answering calls and emails. And at this point, we are processing, continuing to process existing applications and fire rebuilds only. We are working on, depending on how long this pandemic situation and remote work continues, we're gearing up to be able to start accepting new applications. But at this time, we are working with applicants on their existing applications and on keeping fire rebuild projects moving through the process as well. You can keep up to date on what the planning department's changing work conditions are by going to malibu city.org/355/planning. That's basically the planning department homepage. Slide, please. Staff has also transitioned to Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. work schedule while City Hall remains closed. So you can reach your case planners Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. Slide, please. For general inquiries, just continue to use the planning hotline, which is answered every day by our planning technician staff and calls are routed to the appropriate planners as needed. That's 310-456-2489, extension 485, or you can email mplanning@malibu city.org. If you have questions about your specific project and you already have a case planner assigned, just contact your case planner using that person's email or phone number. They can check those messages remotely. Slide, please. Fire rebuilds and fee waivers are still being processed by our fire rebuild team. Andrea Cruz can be reached at her email, acruz@malibu city.org, or her city number and extension, which is extension 379. Slide, please. Wanted to also let you know that we have started our normal operations as far as issuing approvals of projects that the planning director can approve, such as administrative plan reviews and those types of smaller scale projects. We started doing that last week. We are also mailing the notices associated with those projects and issuing the decisions electronically. Slide. In case you're wondering, now that we're issuing decisions again, and this is the planning commission's first virtual meeting, wanted to let everybody know how we will be dealing with appeals or an extension request. I'm going to talk about that next. But for the time being, while City Hall is closed, you can find an appeal application form online at malibu city.org/planingforms. For the time being, you can mail your completed appeal form to Patricia Salazar. Her email address is here, psalazar@malibu city.org. We are working on a way to accept online fee payments. That should be available any day now, but for the time being, we're doing it the old-fashioned way. You can mail your payment to Patricia here at the planning department at City Hall. And for anyone who doesn't have the ability to submit an appeal by email, just contact Patricia directly by email or her phone number, which is here, 456-2489, extension 245, and she will work with you to make alternative arrangements. Just be sure to contact her two business days before the appeal deadline so that you can set up some sort of mechanism to submit your appeal, whether dropping off at City Hall or whatever, she will coordinate with you directly. Slide, please. And then basically the same process will work for a time extension. If you have a project approval and you are needing to file a time extension request, please remember that you need to, just like normal, under normal circumstances, you would need to submit your extension request before the expiration date. You can find the forms at the same location online, planning forums, and you can also mail those or you can email those to Patricia at her email and mail the extension fee to Patricia and contact her if you need to make alternative arrangements other than email. Next slide. For anyone who needs to record a document as a condition of approval requirement, we can still take care of that at City Hall. You just need to contact your case planner directly and your case planner will work with you on what those arrangements are. And next slide, that may be the last one. Nope. Just wanted to give everyone an update on short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units. These were two high priority projects we were working on right before the pandemic caused the City Hall closure. I want to assure everybody that these are priority projects with staff. We are continuing to work on them. Public participation is critical to these, and so we want to make sure we've got this virtual meeting process ironed out before we bring those forward, just to make sure everybody can participate and share their opinions and input because we've had a lot of interest in these two topics. I think that is my last slide and then can I carry on with the fire rebuild update?
Let me go through the list first for questions.
Commissioner Masa raising his hand.
I see him. I got everybody now. Chris, you're first on the list. You got any questions for Bonnie?
Not on this.
Okay, how about Steve? No, I'm even. Okay, David?
Good, thanks.
Okay, John?
Well, my only question was, you talked about short-term rentals and ADUs. Are city projects like the PCH parking coastal application on hold or are those going to come to us?
Um, yeah, we are gearing up to have a more regular sized agenda and to pick up the projects that we had in the queue on the meetings that were canceled and things like that. So yes, that'll be coming on an agenda fairly soon. We wanted to try to get one or two meetings under our belt before we fully load up the agenda.
Okay, got you. The other question I had was, it's my understanding that people can appeal items on these meetings without having to speak or send in an email. Is that correct, Trevor?
That's right.
Okay. And Chris, you had another, your hand up?
Yeah, I just, with the concept of ADUs in place, is there any guidance from the city if someone does want to use those rules for any building at this point? Is it just on hold until that's been heard by the city?
For which rules about what?
If, because there are state rules that are, you know, in place, or how are those addressed if someone does want to try to take advantage of those? They just can't use those rules in the city until we adopt related ordinances?
Are you talking about accessory dwelling units? That's the part that patched out.
Yeah, sorry. It was related to ADU specifically, yes.
So the city has in place a local coastal program that does address development of second units, which are the same thing as ADUs. So anybody that's interested in an ADU or construction should just contact staff and we will walk you through where we're at today in terms of how to process an application for that.
Got it. So it'd follow the same as what we currently call secondary units?
We have to kind of blend the state rules and the local coastal program the best we can. Essentially, the local coastal program rules are still in place, but we're not allowed to require a public hearing, which the LCP would normally require for an accessory dwelling unit. So that's what I mean by it's kind of a blending of processes.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Patricia, I think we're ready for the next item. That would be item 1B. This is the staff update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process. All of a sudden, I've got a big picture of Chris Marks. Picture of you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, that's probably Richard Malika I'm looking for now.
Fire rebuild update. Are you waiting for your slideshow?
Yes. Good evening, members of the planning commission. I wanted to give you a quick update as to where we are with the fire rebuild process. If I could have the mic, please, Alex. To date, we have processed 61 applications that are like-for-like rebuilds, 141 applications where they're, and 17 have come in where they result in a change to the home that's either a completely different home, which you'll see this evening, or they've gone beyond the 10% addition. Next slide, please. As you can see, there's been a bit of a slowing of the applications coming in towards the planning department. However, we are still working with folks to take in their applications. We have reached out to anyone who leaves us a message about wanting to submit an application. We work with them to take it in electronically and will route it to all the different agencies electronically. So we are trying to still continue the process and remove any barriers that would prevent anybody from submitting during this time. Next slide, please. We are continuing to administer the program as approved by the city council for fee waivers. At this time, the fee waiver program in terms of planning fees, it is coming to an end on June 30 of this year. However, there has been some discussion of an ordinance going before the city council to perhaps extend that. When that happens, we'll update our information and get that out to the public. But if there are folks that are concerned, we would be more than glad to receive that correspondence and we will pass it on to the city council so they are aware of the need. However, the fee waiver program still allows for the waiving of building fees if your project's complete with the planning department by the 30th up until the end of this year.
Um, Richard, before you continue, I just wanted to add that the city council will be considering that extension of the fee waiver program at their meeting on April 13th. So one week from tonight.
These numbers here are the numbers from the building and safety department. They have 69 of the fire rebuild projects are currently in plan check and that work is continuing with the city. If we need to, we're taking in documents electronically and also working with California Code Check and using courier services. So we're trying to keep the plan check process moving. And we've issued a total of 90 building permits. I'm aware of building permits being issued as recently, I think, as last week. So we are, even with the slowdown, we're working on a way to get over the fact that folks can't come into City Hall. We are working on that and two homes have been completed. Next slide, please. And for those folks who have been displaced by the fire and they're having difficulties receiving public notices from our department, we are willing to send those same notices out by email. And as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, anybody who is having trouble receiving mail and would like to get notices by email, I can send an email to Kathleen Stecco in the planning department. That is ksteco@malibu city.org. And Stecco is spelled S-T-E-C-K-O, and she will make sure that any notices we send out will be via email to that person. If you have any questions about the fire rebuild process, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
Okay, we're asking about questions about the fire rebuild process. Chris, anything?
Not today.
Okay, how about, who is number two? Urey, Steve, how are you?
I'm doing good, Jeff. How are you?
Good.
I just, Richard, you've got about 160 homes either in process or where permits have been issued out of somewhat 450 that were burnt down. What is your take on the people that are not in the system yet? Are they still coming? Have we contacted them? Do we think they're going to show up? Just, I mean, you've got a better feel for this than I have. So where do you think it's going?
We are working, finding with really two groups now, folks that are just finishing up resolutions with their insurance companies. So they now have money to get started on the process. Or what we're seeing are projects where they wish to add something new that they didn't have before, like a guest house or a swimming pool. They're trying to do something different and not just put the home right back where it was the same size.
Okay, but if you had to take a guess at the number that are coming in the next two months, what do you think the number of people that are going to come to you in the next two months with building plans to say, let's get going?
Given our current trajectory?
Yeah.
Might only be about 20 or 30 folks for like-for-like, just looking how the numbers have been panning out the last couple of months.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of, as we get to the end of this, what it might look like. But okay, thank you.
David, any questions?
No.
John?
No.
And I would say, just, it's not a question exactly, but it does seem to me like this is a wonderful opportunity to introduce electronic submittals to the city's process. So now that people can't come to City Hall, maybe there's a state grant out there in the related to the COVID-19 that might allow us to get the funds to introduce electronic submittals.
Okay, second that, Jeff. Let me second that, Jeff.
Okay, I think that includes item 1B. Patricia, we're now on to item 2, written and oral communications from the public. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mr. Craig Hill.
Okay. Craig, I can't see you, but if you're up. I think Patricia has to give you the go sign. I'm not sure.
Mr. Hill, you could start now.
Can you hear me?
No, we can hear you.
You hear me?
Okay.
You may begin.
Yeah, I don't see myself. I don't see anyone else. Do you hear me?
We do.
We do.
We're listening.
Okay, I don't know if you hear me or see me, but yeah, so now you can hear me. I'm hearing you from, I'm going to turn that off. All right. Yeah, I just got in. I've been trying for an hour here, but I hope everybody's doing all right and I think we're. John, can you turn that off? Hang on. Technology. All right. Yeah, okay. Three things I just wanted to touch on. One, I've heard from a bunch of people saying that they're confused about what the city's state of emergency is, that there's already the county and the state restrictions, closed beaches, trails, et cetera. The city's declaration reorganized some internal matters, reclassifying staff roles, adjusting salaries, et cetera. But people want to know what, if any, effect it has on the community itself, and maybe Trevor could clarify all that. Secondly, there might be fewer similar questions if the alert system were more streamlined. As it is for many alerts, you have to click through to a browser link to read what it's about. You click, the browser loads, and then you see a message you've already seen several times. People are suffering click fatigue. Make the message be the actual message. Third, the federal response has been pathetic. They're arguing about masks and ventilators, matters in which thousands of lives are at stake, but they're still not requiring the two most necessary things, mandatory distancing and testing, in which millions of lives are at stake. It's dereliction of duty at the top level, the result being a fragmented response on down the chain of command. Trump himself has said that this is a matter for the states to deal with. So the city should be banding together with other localities through the National Council of Mayors to present a more unified proactive program dealing with the pandemic. Either this movement is happening and the city should get on board, or it needs to be started. Mayor Farrar should be on the phone tomorrow morning with manager Feldman working the contact list. Alternatively, the coordination could be arranged through state governors, in which case the city, through the mayor's voice, should be lobbying Governor Newsom's office and conferring with Ted Lieu and Henry Stern about how best to organize a coordinated national scale response. Maybe you give Joe Biden a nudge and wake him up. We need simultaneous distancing, simultaneous, with eight states still not requiring it. We'll have to do it for many more months, not just weeks, to be able to get far enough down the backside of the curve that those people known to have antibodies can start rebuilding the economy. As it is, we're all being forced to drag this out till a few states get over their idiocy. Pretty good is not good enough. Meanwhile, we won't know where we are on the curve without widespread testing that's organized in a way to develop meaningful statistical pictures. Our mayor should be conferring with other leaders who understand. Our mayor should be conferring with other leaders who understand exponents. And who are concerned with more than their poll numbers. Sadly, it has fallen to states and localities to develop a coordinated response. Where the feds seem unwilling or unable to do so. That's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other speakers, Patricia?
No other speakers.
I'm sorry, Trevor?
I was just briefly going to respond, uh, to Mr. Hill. He, uh, mentioned this local state of emergency and that's something that's put in place to facilitate local action. The actions taken by the city during the state of emergency can be found on the website. There's a whole series of updates about actions the city is taking. There's also at the next city council meeting, some items that will be considered. By the council, take additional action locally. So people can check out that if they're interested.
Okay, Patricia, I think that takes us to item two B. Planning Commission and Staff Comments and Inquiries. Commissioners, uh, let's start with Chris.
Yeah, let's see. So, um. Definitely weird times right now. Um, I did just want to say, uh. It caught my attention that kind of as visiting for the item five A out of the Crowley property. Just seeing that this community is really getting to that recovery phase where we're seeing quite a bit of growth out there, you know, new construction going on. And it's just great to see. And you contrast that with the fact that, you know, as I'm standing on that property, I couldn't get within, you know, 50 feet of anybody, you know, you just, you just. The, the, the contracts is strike, contrast is just really striking. But as we're, as a community, really kind of getting to that, that turn in the corner. Uh, we've got this stumble in front of us, um, that we're, you know, having to deal with as a world. So. I just wanted to, you know, share with the community that, that. I feel for where everyone is. And hopefully we can keep, you know, with the guidance of the planning commission as well as I should say, the planning staff. To keep things moving. Um, just really looking forward to helping people, uh, keep things moving ahead. Um, obviously stay focused on the social separation, you know, I think, uh, Craig called out some good points there. And, um. Uh, I just want to make another comment, uh, kind of on a side note. Um, I really like having these full size PDF files. So whoever uploaded those to this, this document, I appreciate that. It helps to review these in more detail. So that was what I have.
Okay, thank you. Steve.
Uh, just a couple of quick ones. When Craig Hill was on, we, there was no picture of him and I assume that was because he called in. Is that how speakers are going to show up? We cannot expect that. They should not expect to see their face on the screen as that's going on. Is that a correct assumption?
That, that's correct at this point in time. That may be something we'll add. But at this point in time, it's audio only for people that are.
Do we have any idea how many people are actually watching this thing? It's, it does zoom give you some perspective that says? Or do we know?
Thirty-nine participants.
Yeah, you can scroll down and see yourself.
Oh, there are.
Plus everyone on YouTube and that's, uh, streaming on or on channel three.
Ah, okay, I missed that. That's, that's very good. And the only other thing, I hope everybody out there is staying safe. This is an important time. You know, very strange time, I guess, but important that we take care of ourselves. So I encourage everybody to. Stay at home, watch TV or watch these meetings because. There's, I'm sure there's something better going on, but this will break up your evening. Go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry.
David?
I'm sure there's something better going on. Having said that, I, I, I second what, what Chris and Steve said. I, I, I too was really encouraged. Just to see the community involvement in the main project before us this evening. People have a lot of other things on their mind and a lot to deal with. And, and you know, yet they're willing to pay some attention to the things that we have to be considering, which I thought was. Uh, very heartening, um, to know that the community is there and they're, they're focused on some of these things too. That's it.
Okay, and that would be John, you're next.
Yeah, I just, uh, I'm encouraged that people are watching this. I, I want to make sure the public understands that. Uh, if you've never been to a planning commission meeting, what we usually do is we have interaction with the staff. We have a lot of visuals. And today, all we see is each other. So it's going to be, this is, uh, one of the things we're hearing tonight is quite complicated. I'd be. Pretty hard for us to. Uh, get the information we need that we normally, the way we normally do it. So. It's up to us to, to try to make sure we get enough information to make an informed decision. And we'll just have to play, play with that as we go. If we don't, I for one, if I don't feel. Adequate in making a decision, I won't make a decision. But I hope the public understands that we're trying the best and the staff has done. A good job and we've practiced trying to do this right and. Hopefully it works.
Okay, I will, I will just echo what, uh, what, uh. David and Chris said. The, the main project that's before us tonight is really in my neighborhood. I used to walk by it on a regular basis and I haven't been by there in a long time. And I was just. I did drive by to take a look at it and I was amazed at how many homes are being rebuilt right in that, in that area. And it's very heartening to see. See that happen. There's a lot of activity and it looks like, uh, that neighborhood is going to come back to life. So. Uh, with that, I think that includes our presentation. Uh, are there more staff comments from you, Bonnie?
Uh, thank you, Chair Jennings. I just wanted to, um, reiterate that the city council will be holding a meeting on next Monday. It's, it will also be a virtual meeting. And the fee waiver extension item will be on that agenda. Um, I also wanted to mention that, um, city hall is hosting drive-through COVID-19 testing this week. Um, today and tomorrow are for first responders only. Wednesday through Saturday are, you can call and get, um, a pre-registration. The website to go to is covidclinic.org. Forward slash core, C O R E. So there is, uh, for this week, a, uh, drive-through testing facility at city hall. Uh, that concludes my remarks.
Yeah, let me add that, uh, there's also drive-through testing available at the Malibu urgent care. Which is being funded by a grant from the Malibu Foundation. And you can reach that by going to the, to their website. I don't have the details on it, but I know. It's a little confusing because it's happening just at the same time as the, uh, as the Malibu city testing. All right, that concludes, uh, that item and takes us now, uh, Patricia to item three, a consent calendar. Three B specifically. Commission members, John, uh, we'll talk about, uh, items to pull and I'll start with you, John.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item three B eight.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, and, um, Steve?
No, nothing.
David?
Nothing.
Chris?
I just had a quick question, I think a clarification on item, uh. Three B three. I don't know what need to pull it, but can I ask something of staff on that one briefly?
Why don't you go ahead with that now?
So on three B three, there was an attachment there which appeared to be from the wrong address. Did anyone notice that? It was proposed conditions of approval for a different address. That can just be corrected. So the record is, is, is reflected correctly there. So three B three, it was page forty-seven of the entire PDF.
Okay, we will, um, check the documentation and make sure that the correct conditions of approval are attached.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, um, did I miss anybody? David, you, did I miss you?
No, no, I was good.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve consent calendar. The remaining items, three B, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and nine.
Second, my second.
Moved in second. And Patricia, would you call the roll, please?
I'm having some technical difficulties. So I'm just going to say this on my commissioner marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Euring.
Yes.
Commissioner Wild.
Yes.
Vice Chair Massa.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Patricia, that brings us to the pulled item. Oh, I was going to ask you, were there any, uh. Anybody in the audience who asked to pull an item from the consent calendar now that we've already?
Yes, uh, one speaker for item three B eight.
Oh, well, good, because we pulled that one already. Um, that takes us to item three B eight, John's item. Uh, can we have a staff report, please?
Excuse me.
Jeff, Jeff, can I interrupt for just somehow I hit, hit something where I've lost the meaning. Can I log back in?
You're on.
I lost the meeting.
We've got you.
You got me. I don't, I don't see you guys at all.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I, everything but. Whatever else is.
There's probably something at the bottom of your screen, which if you click on it, it'll bring the meeting back up, is my guess.
I'm looking for that.
Is anyone else having that problem?
I got kicked out as well. I'm talking to IT right now.
Should we take a? Five minute? Break or we're going to be able to overcome this in a hurry?
I think in a minute or two, one second.
All right, we'll just sit here and stare at each other.
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. I'm not sure what.
No, thanks for, thanks for letting us know.
Yeah, we can see you though.
Well. I, I have no, there's nothing on my screen dealing with this issue.
Oops.
Oh, I get now there's Jeff. I see Jeff now. Where the hell did he come from?
Hey, one favor, can someone start presenting something? It might help if there's a document up. I know Patricia lost connection. Maybe if, uh, Bonnie or someone else could present. Okay, good. And now you, do you see something then Steve also?
I see you.
Do you see it? Do you see a document though?
I see the location Seagull Way, which is the item that's in front of us.
Okay.
And yeah, I love, I love technology. Go ahead.
I think we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we were at the point where we're asking for a staff report, I think. Yes.
Richard.
Good evening, commissioners. What you have before you this evening, um, was, was brought to our attention. There was a typographical error made. At the last hearing on this item, which was January 10th, 2019. The planning commission did approve a two-year extension as recommended by staff and requested by the applicant. Uh, this morning I reviewed both the minutes from that meeting and also the video from that meeting. And in both of those, it was very clear that the commission approved a two-year extension and not a one year. However, when the resolution was created, uh, it only reflected a one-year extension being granted. So to fix this typographical error, staff will be. Correcting that resolution. It will be brought to the chair for signature. And our city attorney can speak to this if there are questions, but it does not need to come back before the planning commission. Since we can document that it was a two-year extension that was approved. And so that applicant is good until September. I want to say about the 19th or 20th of this year. Uh, so in early September, they, they have not commenced construction. They will need to come back to the planning commission. To request a one-year extension.
Any remarks, Trevor?
No, this is just a simple typographical error. So it's unfortunate it wasn't copied before it was agendized for this meeting. So it's just going to be corrected as a typographical error and then brought back to be, um, just signed by the chair.
John?
Do I need to make a motion to approve this or it just disappears?
No need for a motion. This is just a, it's just an error. And since it's already agendized, Richard made the report to let everyone know what's going to happen on it. We do have a public speaker, I think.
That's correct. We have, um, the applicant is available if there are questions and then Mr. Craig Hill would like to speak.
Okay, the applicant, well, I don't, does anybody have a question for the applicant? All right. Craig, you want to bring on Craig?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Craig, I'm going to start the timer. One moment, please. Begin.
Okay, you can hear it. Yeah, no, I just wanted to call out the same thing. I noticed that the, uh, in the minutes from the January meeting that it was a two-year. So. Um, while I'm on, I'll just mention though that there's no council agenda posted yet. So I wonder why that is. And that's all I have to say on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg. All right, that, uh. Concludes that item.
I have a quick one to familiarize Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Trevor, I thought you mentioned that there was a, was there only one email about this that had been initiated by Richard to clarify about the typo. There was nothing beyond that, right?
That's right.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but.
That's okay, because earlier it sounded there might have been a couple more emails and then I was afraid I might have missed one, but it sounds like we're all good. So that's it for me.
Yeah, no, that's all. There was just one email from Richard to clarify.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that concludes the consent calendar and we're now on to the next item, which is. Uh, item five A. This is a coastal development permit, Woolsey Fire number nineteen dash oh oh four. It's got a site plan review, two site plan reviews and a minor modification. And we have a staff report, please. Whoa.
Here we are. Can everybody see the presentation? Okay.
No, I don't see it. How do I find it?
I think it's behind your screen with the, with the faces on it.
It should be on your screen, Jeff.
It's not on my screen.
What are you looking at on your screen?
I'm looking at. I'm looking at, uh. Justine, myself, Patricia, Richard, Chris, David, Bonnie, Trevor, Steve and Jeff.
If you, if you click on the top of that screen and kind of slide it around, I think maybe you'll see that the staff report is underneath it. I'm not. I'm not sure. I've got two screens, so it doesn't. Really apply to me, but.
What do you mean?
Can you move the box that has all the?
So you can't, you can't see the people when you're looking at the staff report?
You can't, there's an option. If you go to the very top of your screen, uh, with your cursor, it says view options. And if you click on that and do side by side, it should let you look at the people and the, the presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Um, good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The project before you this evening is for a new single-family home and associated development. To replace residents destroyed by the 2018 Woolsey Fire. Uh, next slide, please, Alex. Um, the subject property is a wedge-shaped lot that was previously, again, developed. With a residence landscaping, hardscaping, uh, and solar panels. The project is located in the Malibu Park neighborhood, a long established neighborhood that was almost completely. Um, built out prior to the Woolsey Fire. Um, and we'll talk about the effects in a minute. The subject property, um, cannot be seen from any public scenic areas, including PCH beaches, parks or trails. The area surrounding the subject property is characterized by highly variable lot sizes. Um, the topography in the area generally ascends from southwest to the northeast. Um, and this sloping topography has resulted in several other houses in the area with a stepped or notched into the slope type of design. The houses in the area range in age of original construction from 1950 to 2014. With the exception of the houses being rebuilt, um, right now. With the houses generally increasing in size, uh, the more recently they've been constructed. Next slide, please. Uh, as shown here, the majority of the development in the area was destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire and as many of the commissioners. Noticed, um, several of these are being rebuilt. Uh, next slide. Uh, twenty-six of the thirty-eight properties within 500 feet of the subject property. Were destroyed, um, and they're highlighted on the slide in red. Of those twenty-six thirteen, a half are either, have either obtained planning department approvals or have applications. Under review. Next slide. The proposed project includes, um, a 5,932 square foot. Two-story principal residence, um, including, um, as well as an attached, um, 832 square foot garage. Um, and a detached 718 square foot second residential unit. A total of 7,482 square feet of TDSF is proposed. The existing swimming pool will be refinished, but no expansion of the existing pool is proposed. Um, however, there is new hardscaping, um, including a new pool deck and a water slide proposed. Um, sometime between 1993 and 2002, prior to the acquisition of the property by the current owners. Um, a tennis court, sports court was constructed, um, without any evidence of, uh, permits that we could find. The current owners are requesting and after the, after the fact approval of the sports court. Um, and the sports court fencing is part of this application. Um, a clarification from the report, the project does not contain a basement. Uh, my apologies for that typo in one part of the report. Um, it was erroneously included. There is no basement. It was erroneously included. There is no basement. The project includes two site plan reviews. One to allow portions of the flat roof to exceed eighteen feet up to a maximum of twenty-four feet. Oh, sorry, Alex. Next slide, please. And then a second site plan review is requested for construction on slopes steeper than three to one, but not steeper than two and a half to one. The proposed development is largely on the existing building pad. However, portions of the proposed development, including the lower level of the principal residence and a portion of the pool hardscaping are sited on slopes ranging from again, three to one to two and a half to one. Those slopes are a result of the grading for the previous house. Finally, because the proposed project is designed to take advantage of that existing building pad and the driveway and fire access and to avoid additional site disruption, a minor modification is also requested to reduce the required front yard setback. The setback is larger, i.e. further away from the street than the previously existing residence. Next slide. As I said, the proposed residence is designed to take advantage of the previously existing developments footprint and fire access and remaining site improvements, including the pool, while still complying with the current code. As you can see here, the previously existing development is in red and the proposed is in green. Next slide. The existing building pad where the home will be placed is ten feet lower than the existing street level. And the front elevations are shown here on this slide. When viewed from the street, the proposed residence appears to be just one story and is approximately seven and a half feet shorter than the previously existing residence on that side. The proposed building, as I mentioned, is farther away from Cuthbert Road than the previous residence and again, is lower than, or in elevation than the neighboring properties to the north. So no protected blue water or beach views or mountain views would be blocked. Next slide, please. In accordance with the grading section of the LIP, you can see here, especially on that east elevation, that the residence is designed as a multi-level structure that notches into the slope in order to follow the natural contours of the lot. Next slide. There have been some questions about how the two-thirds rule was assessed for this project and in general. So to speak in general terms, with respect to the two-thirds rule, the figure you see here is just for illustration purpose, purposes only and not specific to this project. But it usually demonstrates how we evaluated, evaluate projects that follow the contours of the site. The red hatched area of the diagram qualifies as the area that would need to be two-thirds of the area shaded in blue. Because the area in red is both over eighteen feet in some areas and a second story. This assessment takes into account both the LCP and the MMC language and again, allows for the proposed main residence or any residence to be designed to step down, notching into the existing slope and following the existing topography in accordance with the grading section of the LIP. In this case, for this proposed project, as a result, the portions of the structure over eighteen feet are located on the south rear or downhill side of the residence, so that the home appears to be just eighteen feet when viewed from the road. And you can see that if you go to the next slide. To be more project-specific, what you're looking at here is that the lighter portions on the right side of the screen include all areas over eighteen feet and that are a second story. Set to the two-thirds rule is only calculated using TDSF, however, if for the sake of experimentation, you wanted to calculate the two-thirds rule using the gross floor area, which we did not do and I can talk about that further after the presentation. If you were to use gross floor area, the large porch areas and the garage would not be counted towards the floors that they are on. And in that case, the project would still comply with the two-thirds rule. And I can explain that in more detail and probably more clearly as well. Next slide. So here you can see the story poles and existing conditions from the northern edge of the residence looking south in the first photo. The view of the existing pool with the proposed residence above to the left of the photo in that second photo. Next slide. On the left is a view of that existing tennis court and you can see faintly the remnants of the solar field that will be repaired and replaced. And then on the right side photo is the view looking north towards the existing pool that remains as well as the story poles for the proposed residence. Next slide. On the left is the view from the street looking out from the edge of the driveway towards the ocean. And then on the right is the view from the northern edge of the front lawn, kind of backed up from that front photo, looking south. Next slide. In conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of the resolution and approval of the CDP with the included discretionary requests. I am available for questions. And I believe that the applicant and owner are also available for a presentation and questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Justine. We're good. Whoa. I think I'm still on. Yeah, okay. We're gonna go through disclosures now of Ex parte communications. Chris?
I did have a call with the applicants. We talked through the project and some of the aspects of it, which were covered in the staff report. So there was nothing beyond the scope of the staff report that came out from that conversation.
Steve?
I had a conversation with the applicant's architect, who was, we, we had set up a meeting to do a site visit, but that was before the virus took, came up. He was gonna explain the two-thirds rule to me, which he thought was very complex, but we never had a chance to do that.
David?
I had a site visit with the architect and subsequent phone call with the applicant directly. Nothing discussed that wasn't already covered in the report.
John?
I had, I drove by the property. I could not get in. I had a conversation with Richard Mollica this afternoon, trying to figure out the two-thirds rule.
Okay, and I had a couple of visits to the property, just drive-bys, taking a look at it, confirming the lower level and the view from that area. Also noticed the, the large, rather, three-story house immediately to the, to the west of the property, but nothing else that was not included in the staff report.
Can I have one more disclosure? Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
When I did visit the property, I noticed there to kind of the northeast corner of the property, there's what looks like a almost like a stump set of a storage shed, which has a foundation perimeter and then nothing existing on the ground any longer. It's marked as impermeable, but it didn't look impermeable to me. So that was one of their observation I had. If that needed to be included in the impermeable coverage or if it was gonna be developed.
Okay.
Did that description make sense? It was called out on the, on the staff report. I can recite the page if it helps.
Justine, are you still there?
I'm still here. You said it was in the which corner?
Up in the northeast. When you look at the, there was an illustration showing the, there it is. Page four of twenty-three. It's just to the right of the corner of the upper, you know, to the upper right of the red in, area indicating that the former structure, that kind of pinkish area, that little box. I think that's permeable, but I, I don't know if there's gonna be something built there. Otherwise, I just wanted to point out it did not appear to be impermeable, looking down at it.
Chris, what are you looking at?
Page four of twenty-three of the staff report. There is a.
Online?
I'm probably not able to share, but um.
Are you got it on your machine, a separate machine?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
It's noted on the plans as a old building foundation.
Would it be permeable or no?
I, I believe that's to be demolished.
Okay.
So it, it might be impermeable at this moment, but it will be removed as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're ready now to open the public hearing. This is gonna be a little challenging. Ordinarily, I would have the speaker slips in front of me and know who was ready to speak, but as we speak, I have nothing. So Patricia, you're gonna have to help us through this.
I'm here to speak.
One moment, one moment. I'm going to raise the time to fifteen minutes. One second, please.
Okay, and, and can you identify for me the, this, the applicant?
The first speaker is Lewin Wurtheimer, followed by the owner Dana Grollick, please.
We have one more, Stephen Nichols, who would like to speak.
Is he part of the applicant team or is he just a neighbor or friend or?
I'm gonna have to refresh my screen to see him as a speaker. One moment, please. I'm not sure how he's.
In order to speak, you needed to log in and make a request and Patricia's gonna read all the people that have requested.
I have a Stephen on my screen.
He's speaking now, so.
Steve, you need to turn on your lights.
Yeah, Steve, you're in the dark over there.
As of right now, I only have two speakers for this item. Lewin Wurtheimer, the applicant, the architect and Dana Grollick. I don't have the additional speaker, so.
I clicked in on the.
I, I, I can see his name lit up with the box there. So we'll get to him after we hear from the, from the applicant.
I can add him after the owner and so.
A- a- after the applicant team, Mr. Wurtheimer and Dana Grollick. So let's start with Lewin Wurtheimer would be the, the first speaker. The applicant has fifteen minutes. You can use it all or you can, you can use some of it or you can save some for rebuttal if there is a need for rebuttal, but we'll have to figure out this as we go along. But anyway, Mr. Mr. Wurtheimer, if Patricia can start you off, we can get going.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Got you. Hello, Commissioners and staff. Thank you so much for arranging this. I, I think this is really very impressive. I, I'm, I'm quite amazed. So Alex, if you could open up the first slide, please. That's the second one. There. So this is just a rendering of the front of the house from the driveway, street, auto court. Showing the stepped volumes, all one story in height less than eighteen feet as perceived from the, the street, rustic materials, stained wood, earth-colored, warm stucco, steel doors and windows. And next slide, please. The site plan we've already seen. I just wanted to show the colored version to give you a sense of green space to build and paved space. Next slide, please. The lower level, again, you've seen, again, just wanted to show the distribution of landscaping proportional to the most least built into the hillside, lower level, built in three sides below grade, open on two sides towards the view and towards the garden area. Next slide, please. The upper level from the auto court, the garage, main living area, master suite porches and then steps going down to the lower level where the pool area is. Next slide. Simple roof plan with the stepped volumes, all flat roofs with no equipment, a couple, a few skylights and simple gravel materials, non-reflective. Next slide, please. You've seen these elevations. I just wanted you to see them in color. The front elevation from the auto court, the side elevation from the street. Next slide. The rear elevation, this is really where it's most exposed, but also where it's least visible from the neighbors. And then the side east elevation, showing how it's really, the lower level's completely buried on this side and almost invisible. Next slide, please. And then this is the, the foot, the floor plan of the small guest house at the lower part of the property below the bocce ball court, the existing lower entry gates would remain and the client's mother will be living here. So it's a multi-generational complex. Next slide, please. And just the low elevations of the one-story guest house. Next slide, please. A little section through the guest house and the roof plan, all similar materials and details to the main house, just a smaller version. Next slide, please. Alex, oh, thank you. We built a model of the project for the neighbors. I'm for the neighbors' purposes and also for the owners and for the architects. So we use these models as design tools. They really help us understanding the three-dimensional qualities of the building before it's built. So the left view is from the street. Those are the gates, looking into the auto court, the entry courtyard and the stepping down of the building, the north, the, the right side, looking down into the auto court. Next slide, please. The left view, looking at the, the side that's, has the lower level really buried underneath the main level. And to the right is the south elevation showing the relationship of the lower guest house to the main house and the pool and the terraces and the steps. Next slide, please. I'm not gonna talk about this unless it comes up in discussions, so, but I am gonna talk about the exhibits that kind of explain all of this information. Next slide, please. This is a superimposi- a superimposition. Now, this is a this, we've shown the roof plan of the model, superimposed onto a aerial photograph of the site area, the, the neighborhood before the fire. So that you got a sense and the, the project site, if I could point to, it's right in the middle. You can see the arch-shaped pool. That's probably the easiest to identify. I think what's important about this is if you look at the different roofs of the different houses around, you will see that the scale of our project is really very much in keeping with most of the houses, even though the, the lots in this neighborhood, and I'll describe that later, are of such varying sizes. I think there are some pretty visible signs of similar scale roof surfaces. Next slide, please. So thirty-seven, there are thirty-seven parcels with, within the five hundred foot radius of the property. Seventy percent, meaning twenty-six of those thirty-seven homes burned in the Woolsey Fire. Those are shown in red. Twenty-two percent or eight of those thirty-seven of existing homes remain standing after the fire and eight percent, three of the thirty-seven parcels were and are still vacant lots. And we don't know of any plans yet to develop those. Next slide. So this is about house size, neighborhood, character. And we did a little study of the five hundred So this is about house size, neighborhood, character, and we did a little study of the five hundred-foot radius properties. And using assessors records and other sources, we trying to compare apples and apples, we determined that eleven or thirty-two percent of the thirty-four developed parcels have structures between thirty-eight hundred square feet and nine thousand square feet. Those are all shown in red above. The subject property measured the same way, the way assessors measure, would be five thousand three hundred and sixty-three square feet in yellow. So pretty much right in the in the middle or the lower middle of that that range. And then the photographs on the right and the left are showing the the different numbered lots of those eleven parcels that we studied, showing the scale and magnitude of those houses. So for example, lot twenty-four up in the upper left-hand corner is a sixty-five hundred square foot house. Lot twenty-seven is a nine thousand square foot house, et cetera, et cetera. Lot thirteen is a five thousand square foot house. Lot twelve, five thousand three hundred, and then the rest are a little or smaller. Next slide, please. So this exhibit is talking about lot size to house size, which I think is another very important aspect, considering the the huge discrepancy between lot sizes. I think the the largest lot in the area is twenty, is almost twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand square feet. And the smallest in the radius is just under eighteen thousand square feet. And our subject property is fifty-two thousand. So there's this wide range of lot sizes in the in just within the five hundred-foot radiance, but the whole neighborhood. So.
Excuse me, Lewin. I just wanted to give you a heads up. You have five minutes left.
Okay, thank you. So forty-one percent of those had a percent of the house lot to lot size between nine and twenty-two percent. We would be in the middle at ten percent. Next slide, please. And this was a relationship of the total development square footage. And this might bear some more time studying it if if you have some questions. But we we really tried to look at what lots that have not been approved for development, what they could build in comparison to what we're building, and there were some wide variations there. And that, and then one more slide. This slide, we have, we have forty-seven support letters that were submitted to the city, the planning commission. Ten of those are from adjoining properties that all wrote letters, some very personal, supporting this project, and those are shown in green with our project in yellow. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. How much time is left? Are you there?
Yes, we have three minutes and forty-one seconds left for the project team.
Okay, that would include Dana Grollick. Is he the next speaker?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Dana, is that you?
One moment, let me set the timer, please. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to thank everybody for the tremendous amount of effort that's gone into making this meeting happen tonight. We've been waiting for a long time to get our project in front of all of you. I have to thank Lewin and his team as well as everyone at the planning department that has put in so much effort into helping us through this process. I feel like the Lewin's presentation and Justine's presentation can speak for themselves as to how this project complies. I just wanted to take my time to express from the owner's perspective, how much of a roller coaster this has been for us and for my family, starting with the fire and then trying to come back from that and and work so very hard with the architect and our team and the planning department to create a design that would work for our family and give us some hope and some something to look forward to in building and then to have the the fight last summer when the TDSF was coming into question. That was a was a low point until we came to the other end of that and now under the under the recommendation of the planning department to submit an administrative coastal development permit application. And having that shot down last month, this has just been a crazy ride and and you add on now what's going on with COVID and 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 this new battle we're all fighting. It's 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 been a rough go. So I'm asking that you you all take the time to to consider this and all the work and and effort that we put into really designing a a plan that works great for our family and works, complies with the rules as far as we were from day one, working with the planning department. So just want to thank everybody for all of their efforts and I hope that we can get this project started.
Thank you. We had one more. We had Stephen Nichols. Is he around? Patricia, can you find him?
Stephen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
The timer begins now. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Nichols. I live on three-two-five-eight-eight Pacific Coast Highway for more than twenty-five years. I love Malibu. There is no place I'd rather wake up in the morning than Malibu. I've known the Grollicks, Dean and Dana for more than two decades. They're both doctors of veterinary medicine. They are the principals of Malibu Coast Animal Hospital. They treat the pets, family members of thousands of Malibu residents, seven days a week from seven AM to seven PM. They've been there for me when I needed them and my pets needed them. They had a home destroyed in the Woolsey Fire of twenty eighteen. The new house was designed to complement the topography of the land and will have less elevation than their original home. The design has been shared with their neighbors and has been approved. They have approved the design. The family that has the greatest interest in this project is the Grollicks. They have young children who will live in a home for many, many years. There is no reason that the Grollicks should be prevented from building the home they desire. The Grollicks could have asked thousands of people to come in and speak on their behalf. I'm honored that they asked me. They are very, very special people. I've advised them, if you don't get what you want because it's your home, to keep going, to press, to appeal, to do anything you want. This area is so precious to them and to other Malibu residents that they should be allowed to enjoy it in the way that they decide they want it, as long as it complements the area and as long as it's an intelligent use of the land, and I believe they have done both. And I'll finish with one minute to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Is there anybody else, Patricia, who wishes to address the commission on the item?
We have no other speakers.
Okay, that being the case, we'll close the public hearing. We'll be back to the commission table for discussion, questions, motion. Who would like to start? Chris, we got we're gonna go in alphabetical order. Chris, you got anything?
Yeah, first off, again, it was good to see all the new construction in the area and great work by the applicant team to get the support from the community and really glad to see all the input coming on this one. One clarification, just to make sure I've got the orientation right from the site visit and the plans. The pool does stay in the same location as currently. Is that correct, Justine? Okay, so then just helps me visualize where everything lays there. And during the presentation, there was talk of the view from the road appearing as one story. That's to the north. If someone drives by to the west of the property and looks east, if I'm getting my orientation right, that's when they would start to pick up that kind of second story and profile, correct?
If you're looking from looking to the west from the east as you go down Phillip, as Cuthbert turns around.
Got it. Okay, okay. So and that's so kind of as you get further south on Phillip, that's where you'd start to pick up that second story view. Otherwise, the majority of the view coming around the corner, or around the curve, is appearing as one story that is called out in your presentation, correct, Justine?
Right, and I I would say that it's pretty difficult to see the residents when all of the houses are built. And when the foliage is grown to where it was previously, it was pretty difficult to see the residents from really anywhere.
Okay, and then one other question. I don't know if this is the first, but I know we haven't been through many of the Woolsey Fire rebuilds where we're exceeding that ten percent allowance. Can anyone give guidance in terms of if if this project is looked at any differently from a decision point of view in light of it being a Woolsey rebuild? You know, any guidance there for us?
There's no difference in in how we judged compliance with the code. The the only difference was really that it was expedited on our end.
Okay.
Treated fast-tracked.
Got it. And then I would like, if you could, during your presentation, Justine, you mentioned that we could cover a little more detail. The two-thirds calc not including the covered, kind of covered areas, the non-livable or the gross floor. If we could walk through that, however you had that prepared, that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, and I'll also defer to Bonnie and Richard if they want to go into it in greater detail. Do you have a specific question, or do you want me to talk about it now or wait until everybody's asked?
I'd be fine to wait until the tail end on that one and let some other thoughts get out there.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, well, I'm I'm going to follow up on on Chris's comment on the two-thirds rule. And I'd like to know two things. One, what, when you look at this project with the two-thirds rule, what were you trying to accomplish?
You want you want to answer right now?
Yeah, well, yeah, please.
I'm not sure I want to totally understand your question.
Well, I mean, the two-thirds rule and and, you know, generally was designed to say that if we're building a house, we don't want it to look like a box, so the the second floor should be smaller than the first floor. So when you looked at this project, you said, okay, I've got a design, I've got to come up with a a definition of how this, the two-thirds rule is going to be applied. What did you think about? What was your objective when you set out to do that?
Well, I didn't come up with a definition or have an objective other than applying the code as we have interpreted it in the past. And so that is looking at the TDSF, the square footage of any area above eighteen feet and or a second story. In the case of this house, those are the same numbers. And that number has to be less, two-thirds has to be less than two-thirds of the area under eighteen feet or first story. Bonnie, did that, is that a better way to explain?
I mean, is there a a model that you can show us that says, here's what I looked at, and here's how I came up with those numbers? That's what I'm, look, when I, you know, I I spoke to the architect, and when I spoke to him, he said, boy, I had to sit down with Bonnie and Richard and Justine and figure this thing out. And Steve, when we sit down and do a site visit, I'll explain it to you. We never got a chance to do that. So I'm just, I'm just looking to have somebody explain it to me.
Let let me stop you there because your your questions are pretty much like what Chris was asking for the same sort of thing. Let's just take a couple of comments to see if there's anybody else who wants to talk about anything but the two-thirds rule. And then we'll come back and have Justine or Bonnie or whoever is gonna do it lay out the process, if that's all right with you.
At at some point in time, I mean, the only other, I mean, I had a couple other, the I guess you've defined that there is no basement. That was helpful because when I read the staff report, I was trying to figure out where the heck that was. And, you know, there there, we ought to just have a little bit of a discussion, talking about the size of the house. Right? I mean, we're back to the neighborhood, character, issue. And everybody may say it's okay, and they may say it's not, but I at least like to have that discussion after we get past the two-thirds rule. That's Jeff, back to you.
Okay, John, is your main focus on the two-thirds rule as well, or do you want to talk about something else, or?
I got several other items.
Well, you want to start now? Go ahead.
Sure. First, Justine, I just want to make, understand the basement. If you look on A four-two, the middle, the middle drawing, which is section AA, next to the rec room is a room that's got a drop, a drop ceiling. And I couldn't find where that was calculated. When you looked at the what I could figure out was the top floor and the bottom floor.
Good favor. Can you restate which page you're on? I missed a reference.
I am on page A four-two of the plans.
Thank you.
So I I saw that room with a drop ceiling. And I figured that was the basement. Is it not the basement and?
There's no basement.
So what is the room?
Yeah, there's no basement. I apologize for that typo in there. So that, if you look on I'm looking at EXC, the TDSF exhibits. That appears to be the storage or mechanical room, and those are both counted toward, fully towards TDSF. There's no basement and those were counted towards the total TDSF.
That's more than a six and a half foot high ceiling.
Right, and that's why it was included.
Okay, now, the second question is the guest house has a full kitchen.
Right.
And guest houses aren't allowed to have full kitchens.
It's it's described as a second unit, which do have full kitchens.
So they can still have a guest house then?
No, you can only have one or the other. You cannot have both.
You can have ancillary structures, correct?
That's right. You could have a art studio, you could have a gym, but you could not have if you already have a second unit on your property, you cannot have another guest house.
Okay, and a second unit is defined as a living unit?
Yes, with a full kitchen.
Okay, now, also on that plan, it shows a courtyard. But I didn't see that calculated in the impermeable coverage. It's right next to the living room.
So.
And John, what would be a good page to reference for what you're looking at?
A two-point-one of the plans.
Thank you.
So it looks like it was counted as impermeable coverage if you're looking at EXE, except for the water features, the koi pond area and the spa. If you're looking at EXE, the everything else was counted as impermeable.
Okay, now, when we get to impermeable, are solar panels impermeable or permeable?
In this case, they're permeable because they're raised off the ground. It would, it would be very simple for the water to get and around, fall off of them. They're raised on like little piles.
Okay. Let me just see a couple of others. Oh, there's two curb cuts. Is that something they, they already have two curb cuts? And is that something, they do already have a curb cut for that second unit? Okay. Okay. Now, how is the illegal grading counted? Is it just ignored as far as cumulative grading or?
Do you mean for the tennis court?
For a whole bunch of stuff. I mean, the whole hill was terraced.
Well, that was, that was not illegal. So if you're talking about what was referenced in the report, that meant for the when the house was first originally built, we don't have any evidence of other illegal grading. But the grading for the tennis court was But the grading for the tennis court was estimated and included in the report.
Okay, and then I'm just trying to catch some things. I I couldn't read the landscaping plans, but let me just go to them real quick. Boy, there's a lot of drawing here. There's. Hang on one second. Okay, there's several of them, but let's start with L one one. It shows what looks like a hedge all the way around the property. But there's no identification of what those plants are. Or how how tall it can grow.
Uh, and we can ask the architect to confirm, but I don't think that's a hedge. I I think that that was just bubbled as for some reason, but we can ask the architect to confirm, and I will look into that as well.
Okay, and the same thing with the fence is the fence. Did it preexist that the LCP?
Yes, the fence and I believe the the vegetation around the property was all has all been there for a very long time.
Okay, well, my question actually is since I couldn't read any of the descriptions of the plants, it just said the number of gallons when they put them in. Are there any plants in the front or side yard setbacks that are trees that are going to grow over 18 feet? Or form a hedge?
I don't think so, but I would just want to take a second to confirm that before I give you an answer. It's been a minute since I looked at the landscape plans.
Yeah, they don't give a size or potential height like you normally do.
Yeah, I don't see any plants that are being planted, you know, in a sequentially like considered to be a hedge.
Except whatever those bubbles are.
Except whatever the bubbles are, yeah.
I think that is bubbling something that they were correcting or addressing on the plans as opposed to it. It's not identified in the legend as a particular kind of plant.
Yeah, I think it's bubbling the fence.
Well, if you look at the right hand side of L three point one versus the left hand side, they're much bigger than the left hand side. So there are different kinds of bubbles.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to ask the applicant team to to come back on and explain.
Okay, so do we have any conditions in the conditions that limit growth?
Yes, the conditions that we normally include, and I want to say it's something like condition thirty. Saying that no hedge can be taller than six feet and.
That's, yeah, you're exactly right. It's condition number thirty and it's on page eleven of seventeen of the resolution.
He talks about side yard setback up other than.
Yes. Yeah, the hedges, any hedge located within the front yard has to be maintained at or below forty two inches. And if it's in the side or rear yard, it cannot exceed six feet.
Okay, and and are trees limited to eighteen?
Trees are not limited to eighteen unless they block somebody's primary view.
So that it just has to do with a view determination or?
Right.
Or how do you do a view determination before the tree grows? And it's been burned.
We don't, Justine, were there any primary view determinations that looked over this property?
Not that I recall, but the other thing to remember is that the properties to the north of this one or that would look towards the ocean are both significantly higher in elevation and also oriented in a way that they're not looking directly at the house. So the primary, I think there was one primary view kind of way up north, but the house was very far below that view. You could see the house, but there's it would be a very tall tree to impact it. We're redwood style.
So do we have any provision that nothing can be grown that will block a public private view?
Yeah, there are, that's a standard condition in the landscape conditions that, let me find that one.
Uh, thirty two vegetations shall be situated on the property so as to not significantly obstruct the primary view from private property at any given time, given consideration of its future growth.
Okay, great. Then I guess when we get to we haven't determined whether the fence is legal or do we know it's legal?
I believe it was installed with the original construction of the house.
In nineteen fifty three or the the latest, was it was it in the two thousand and eight permit?
Um, I can look at the plans they are behind me while we're talking about something else.
Uh, okay, now, since this is an oddball question, but since this is a a new structure under the LIP. Is there a fee for the school district or does that just for the increase in size? Or how does that work?
Uh, that's something that'll be taken care of at the building safety stage. I don't know the answer to that right offhand.
Okay.
Get back to you with that.
Okay, and then, as I understand it, you can have a tennis court right up to the the lot line. You can go, you can go right up to it. Because this one actually touches the lot.
It's you can actually have a tennis court. You just you the fencing is typically the issue that there are limitations on the height of fencing that can occur within a setback.
Okay, and this is limited to six feet?
Right, right.
Okay, I'm going to have bunch of questions on the two thirds rule and the exhibit on size. So I'll wait for everybody else to finish. Okay.
David, how about you?
Um, I I'm waiting on the two thirds rule just for the explanation, but I think I understand what was going on there. I I I want to compliment the applicant on persistence, perseverance and inclusiveness. It's hard to imagine getting that many immediately adjacent neighbors to, first of all, sit down and see what you're doing. And secondly, to approve what you're doing. Uh, I haven't lived in many neighborhoods where neighbors don't have one kind of complaint or another, but that's a very impressive diagram you have showing the support from immediately adjacent neighbors. Um, I to me, and I'm the new kid on the block. You know, this is a burnout victim, and I know how much that disorients your life from my own experience of having that happen. And to come up with a plan like this that is the house being further from the road, having it appear lower from the street, stepping down into the slope as we would want it to do, following the topography down. I, you know, it just seems to me that you're doing everything the right way. I spent a little time, and this may go to John's point, trying to get behind the numbers from the thirty eight properties within the five hundred foot radius. I brought this up at the last meeting, so I think I'll pick up where I left off. Uh, it makes no sense to me to be talking about houses built in the nineteen fifties and how uh, their size or their house to lot ratio compares to what we're talking about in two thousand and twenty. What happened seventy years ago is is not particularly relevant to what's happening now, in my opinion. So what I did instead was I looked at the eight houses that have been built since nineteen ninety. In other words, they're within the last thirty years, which in and of itself is fairly old. And I looked at two numbers for the eight houses since nineteen ninety. One number was the percentage of the house to the lot size for those nine houses. And the average percentage to lot size for those nine houses is ten point oh six percent. That's the percentage of the house to the lot on the and it ranges from small ones to to large ones. The percentage of this property is ten point two one percent. Uh, between ten point oh six and ten point two one, you're right in the middle of what these within the last thirty year houses have done in terms of house size to lot size. In terms of square footage of the house itself, again, I looked at those same since nineteen ninety properties. I'm sorry, I said nine of the eight of them are nine to four. The average in the last thirty years is five thousand three hundred and sixty two square feet for those houses again in the last thirty years. The this one is five thousand nine hundred and thirty two. That's a ten percent increase over the average in the last thirty years. So I I'm hard pressed to see where we're off the rails in any way um, on the average size of this house. Uh, but square footage of this house compared to the neighborhood. Uh, clearly, the neighbors don't think so, or we wouldn't have seen the kind of support that we're seeing here. So I guess I'll kind of defer any further questions to the two thirds discussion, but I didn't see anything spending a lot of time going through all of this and learning a fair amount by going back into the various codes. Uh, I didn't see anything here that troubled me particularly at all.
All right, thank you, David. Just a couple of remarks. One is that, as I said, I this is close to my neighborhood. I used to walk by there on a regular basis and there would when the old house was there, there was a lot of foliage right around the corner as you would turn on the corner from Cuthbert and heading down down Phillip. It was always well wooded and kind of not at all visible. And and I think a lot of that foliage is still there. Secondly, John, um, you know, we do have these procedures uh, that are available, uh, that that were established to for people whose views are or may be affected by growing foliage, you can you can bring your view determination and and have a determination made that your view is to be preserved. In fact, if your view has been lost for growing foliage, you can get you can get your view restored under proper circumstances, John.
Well, I just want to remind you that those all of those rules would be suspended in the Woolsey fire area, and you cannot do it. So that's why we have to be careful of what we approve that may in the future block. Because there is no defense right now at all. You cannot get one. Uh, and because the city council actually voted on it.
You can't get a new one, but if you already had one, then there's still protections there.
Right. Um, I just want to make a couple of comments on David's comment, if I could, and then and this is on size. We've had many, many discussions where and I'm talking probably thirty, where applicants have come in and tried to use the concept of floor area ratio on on residential properties. And it's basically not allowed in the code. Uh, the the determinant of size is TDSF, not floor area ratio, and that's a not a linear scale. So you cannot measure it by doing averages of lot sizes. Especially when you limit them to a certain specific period of time that you've picked out. The code just is not written that way. Uh, so any consideration of floor area ratio, especially when you're cherry picking it, is not really allowed under the process. Now, and we'll have to look at this a little in more detail, but when I looked at the uh, table and the map of the the properties and within five hundred feet. The big ones are not within five hundred feet. We've never can considered flag driveways as development. And we've got all most of the big ones. I don't know. There might be one outside of it that are outside of that radius. And those are basically twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and twenty seven. And so we can't just pick those out because they're not supposed to be in there anyway. Uh, and then average them. Uh, I think what you have to do is take the ones that are valid in the five hundred square feet and then get some version of what the real neighborhood is. And it's hard to do because we don't use the method that's specified in the code for, yes, it's neighborhood standard. Where you kick out the top, the top ten percent, the bottom ten percent, because we don't use a formula. We look at just what the neighborhood's like. And so I and these are super rough numbers. When I went through, I eliminated the ones that weren't in the five hundred.
John, let me let me interrupt you for just a second. If you're going to go into the 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 size issue, that's something that Steve wanted to talk about a little bit. Uh, but let's stick for for the moment, if it's all right with you, with the issue of the calculation of the two thirds rule, and then we'll get back to the the overall size of the project after we've concluded that discussion, if that's okay, Chris?
Yeah, what I would like to do, and I I think Steve probably has a better grasp of this because he's apparently asked the architect about it is at one point. And it was a particular point, you might have been on the city council, I don't know, where we had a house in Bonzel uh, built by proposed to be built by Sonny Estani. And the city council, he did exactly the same type of deal, and the city council called it the upside down two thirds rule and disallowed it. So I'd like staff to tell us what the upside down two thirds rule is and why this isn't part of that.
Well, just a second. I got Chris coming up here, Chris.
Yeah, these are really quick ones. This is addressed to Justine. Um, I noticed in the plans, there's deer grass and landscaping. Is there any concern with fire issues with respect to any of the the selection of of plantings?
The the city biologist reviewed everything as, as you may recall, the city council heard, I think, let me see, I've kind of lost track now.
Yeah.
Still waiting for the second reading to occur of the fire resistant landscape ordinance. Um, so in the meantime, we still have our regular standards for landscaping. And of course, the fire department will have to review the landscape plan for fuel modification purposes, so just wanted to give you that information.
And then just just for the applicant's awareness, if it's, if that, if anything in their landscape plan is deemed not fire appropriate, would they have to conform to that? Or would they be like grandfathered in?
They're subject to the rules in place today, so the the rules that we were trying to pass uh, a while ago are still pending, so they're not subject to that ordinance at this time.
Okay, and then it just as John was speaking, another thought came to mind, and this is going to be a little out of left field. But do we need to consider any other conditions related to coronavirus or any construction during this time, or that would all be handled under this emergency condition the city is under?
The the project at this point will just follow whatever protocols are in place in the city. And they are, they will have to go through the plan check process before they're able to pull building permits. I don't know how quickly they can get that accomplished before they can actually start construction. So it's a little hard to tell right now whether construction will still be allowed as it is right now, or if anything may change. But just so everybody knows, um, building safety is has notified all active construction sites of social distancing protocols that have to be in place in order to continue with inspections. So in order to continue their project, they have to follow all social distancing protocols, wear masks and and things like that. Um, so that's the only way construction can proceed right now.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
It's so fast moving too. It's it's better if these types of issues are dealt with. You know, through how we're regulating everybody else in the city in the same manner to deal with these issues.
Great, thanks for clarifying. Just wanted to bring it up in case we missed it.
John. I got to ask a quick question on the the plants. When we passed it, and I believe what city council has reviewed, and it's just up for a second reading, is that the Woolsey fire area had was included in that ordinance specifically.
That's right.
So I think it's why isn't it like a lighting ordinance where?
The lighting ordinance is specifically retroactive. It has the compliance period and. The lighting ordinance is specifically retroactive. It has the compliance period, and um, as you'll recall, it, it was a phased compliance period based on zones. And so first, the first group of properties that had to retroactively comply were gas stations. So that's what we're dealing with now. The next phase will be commercial properties. Um, the landscape, fire resistant landscape ordinance did not include a retroactive component.
Even though we have a hundred houses already approved, so we're gonna build all these houses with that?
That's right. That was part of the urgency about getting it in place so that we could apply it to things that we're going through the pipeline.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the general rules is that when a, when an application is deemed complete, those are the rules that apply to that application. And, and absent a specific retroactivity provision, you're only governed by the rules that are in place at the time you become completely, so that's the way it used to be. So, uh, all right, Justine, Bonnie, um, you wanna go in and start on the issue of how the, the two-thirds rule was calculated?
Yeah, Richard's gonna walk through some information about that.
If Alec could, if you
Richard, if you could begin by telling us what you were trying to achieve when you looked at this application of the two-thirds rule on this piece of property, that would be helpful.
Sure. Alex, if I could get you to put up slide number ten of Justine's presentation. Or maybe it was nine, somewhere in there.
A little bit of lag with some of this stuff.
So when the applicants approached us with the proposed design, they came with a few different design alternatives. And what they were trying to do basically was, as we all see, they, they did want a larger home. Uh, but they were faced with an issue, and the first issue was the front yard setback. We had realized that the setback that was approved by the city ten or twelve years ago was done so uh, I would say within, with, not with the right approvals. Uh, it could have been done uh with a different approval, but it wasn't. And so we realized that more of the massing of the home uh was best to be further from the street. The problem is that we run into a uh issue with a manufactured slope that was a result of the house being on one pad and then the pool being on a lower pad. And the applicants wish to maintain the pool and not uh remove the pool or repair, construct a new one. And so what they did is they drew a few different designs. And they came up, they came back to us with a design that looked to be about the most possible design to follow, because what it did was essentially it improved the views in the neighborhood. They had reduced the massing on the street side of the building. Uh, the street side was two stories. There was a bedroom or some sort of living area above the garage. And so that put us uh into about the mid twenties in terms of heights. So they ended up with a design that was consistent with the codes for uh both the, the city's general plan and also the local coastal program, uh, land use plan in that development shall try to be uh set in and follow the natural topography of the site. So with that, we had the, the applicant make some tweaks to the design because you cannot build a home with a reverse two-thirds. And what you have here is the reverse two-thirds. If you try the reverse two-thirds, you're gonna run into issues with the coastal commission. So if you did a reverse two-thirds calculation, that would be different. What that would be is the blue that you see, which is the ground floor. That blue would be all on the same level. So what you'd wanna do is, as we get to the right of the screen, you would swap the blue and the red. Uh, so you would see all the blue and then the little red beneath. That's a reverse two-thirds. And as you can see, that is not what staff did here. What staff did here was apply both the two-thirds calculation as it's written in the local coastal program and as it is written in the municipal code. And this procedure was reviewed and approved by the planning commission roughly about ten to eight years. No, we're in about ten years ago, not eight, on Deerhead, uh, I believe was the street. So what, what happens in this type of diagram, which you can see the, the logic that we applied was the code, one-two-thirds code says the areas above eighteen feet shall be no greater than two-thirds the area below eighteen feet. So the dashed line represents the eighteen foot mark. And as you can see, the red box is above eighteen feet, does a portion above eighteen feet. The other part of that code, municipal code in, uh, in the LIP, it says the second floor. So there is a floor below that red box. So the, the second floor or the parts that we look at to see if they are two-thirds are areas that are one above eighteen feet. And or do they have a floor beneath them? So that's the logic that was used because, as I mentioned, that logic has been applied in the past. And also, what it does result in is a design that follows the general plan and the LIP where requests that designs follow the topography to minimize land disturbance and also grading, or excuse me, and also view impacts and massing. So the applicant could have removed that red box and stuck that red box on top of the larger blue box there uh that is on the left. And then someone would say, well, that meets two-thirds. And yes, it does meet two-thirds, but what it also does is it creates a home that is visually much larger. And it also creates a home that gives, when viewed from the south in this case, a home with a three-story appearance. So this will not have a three-story appearance and minimizes views to neighboring properties.
I just want to add one other um thing for consideration, and that is that um, when a code is written, it's uh intended to address a particular issue. And this, in this case, the two-thirds rule is, is meant to deal with the massing of structures to break up the massing so that things don't look, um, you know, as monolithic and uh to make things uh just a little more articulated. And the code can't anticipate every single circumstance that is going to come up as architects or developing projects, or as we're reviewing them. Um, the code is already long. It would be even longer if we tried to anticipate every single scenario. So um, Richard's explained the way that this, um, how the two-thirds rule has been applied to sloping sites um uh over the years. And so this is just a continuation of uh what's been done in the past. I'll leave it there.
That's true.
John?
I believe the two-thirds rule talks about stories also.
Where, where do you see that?
I don't, I can't look it up now because I, I can't use my computer, but uh uh, I believe the two-thirds rule talks about eighteen feet or stories. And the definition of a story is very clear in seventeen oh two, point oh six oh. So isn't, I mean, the blue areas are on different levels, but you're calling them basically the same story. Which seems strange to me. Uh, isn't just making the red box just a choice of the planner to make the rule work, or how do you do with the story rule?
The two-thirds, the two-thirds rule talks about um, any portion of the structure above eighteen feet in height shall not exceed two-thirds the first floor. Uh, so it talks about floors, not stories specifically, but um
Floors are stories in, in definitions. So how do we get around that? And at one point, I don't remember us, uh, the city council changing the upside-down two-thirds rule. Uh, they're the ones who made it.
There's no code that, that says anything about reverse two-thirds. It's, I mean, there's nothing that's ever been put in the code. Just for information, see first.
Is, is reverse two-thirds even relevant here? Because it's come up a few times, but is it something we should consider?
Well, all I'm saying is the city council turned down a house because of that.
Okay.
Their direction usually.
Richard has explained why this doesn't fit that same scenario.
Well, it's almost exactly the same.
Here, here.
John?
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve. You don't understand it better than I do.
No, I mean, look, here, here's the thing that, I'm just trying to make sure that there was some formula that we applied to come up with this result for this house. And only because if, if it comes up, I mean, I've asked three times now to give me the exact computations everybody went through to come up with this two-thirds rule for this house. And all I've gotten was this model that says this doesn't really apply, but it gives you the concept. And all I'm looking for is to make sure that if we do this thing again and again, we're, we're doing it equally for everybody, right? I mean, whatever the formula is, we're applying it over and over again to make sure we're doing the, we're treating everybody equal. And I don't know that we're doing that. I don't, I mean, this is I just don't know. I mean, because this is more of a sample than it is the actual computation. And I don't have the formula. There's, there's nothing written down that says, here's how we're gonna do this. And that's what I'd like to see.
So as I, as I mentioned.
Could you go to the next slide? Sorry, Bonnie.
No, that's okay. Um, on it, on the sheet in the plans called EXD, that's this sheet right here. Um, you also have it in your eleven by seventeen plans. It does go exactly through the calculations of how they what they considered, um, it, how they did the math, basically. So this is, this is what explains that. And this is um, the way that we do that with with projects on sloping sites.
Well, and, and just if I could, um, part of the discussion that was brought up by the Justine mentioned was um do, doing the calculation, I think if I understood correctly, Justine, without including the rear porch or the garage, because those aren't considered livable, is that fair as, as far as what you were stating before?
Right, so there was some question of um if one used the gross floor area to um calculator, calculate the two-thirds, would that work? I just want to be very clear that we do not use gross floor area to calculate two-thirds. That is not the, the TDSF is the appropriate square footage to use. However, if you did for the sake of uh thought experiment, the house does still comply with two-thirds if you use gross floor area because it's taking out the garage uh from the first story under eighteen feet, which is the darker orange. And the large uh covered porch areas, which count as TDSF, but don't count as livable, habitable spaces. Um, that would be removed from that second story above eighteen feet area, so uh, I have the numbers um available if you, we wanna talk about them. Um, but in, in both cases, the house does comply with the two-thirds rule.
And the breezeway and entry hall, those are considered, breezeway is considered uh livable in that context. Entry hall apparently would be, yeah.
That, well, uh, I'd have to look at the numbers, but they would probably take the breezeway out. I'd have to check and see.
Okay, so we basically take out from the upper story that covered porch. And then um also the three-car garage, the mechanical and that other storage areas as well as the breezeway and the entry hall stays in, in scope.
I think so. But again, I, I really want to be clear that using gross floor area is not the way that we do it. It's not the appropriate use of
Yeah.
Of that.
I'm not, I'm not looking at gold for area. I'm just trying to understand this computation. I, I'm not concerned about I'm, I'm the one that asked the question, said if you did the other computation, what would it look like? And I got a response that said wouldn't make a difference, so that's fine.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get my head around. I mean, is what, what the formula is that says I take stuff that's on the main floor and put it back on the slower level?
And we, you basic, in this case, we basically took, um, we counted as the second floor the areas that had another floor underneath it. So that's the area that's in the lightest shade on this plan sheet. And
Can you explain how you can have
Yeah, that's
Four area
Second, John.
Two different levels?
What was your question, John?
The question is, if you look at this diagram, the left-hand side of it is has a floor below it and the right-hand side doesn't. And they're on, their physical floor is approximately ten or twelve feet different elevation. So how can you consider those the same floor? That's, that's where I'm confused. How can you have a two-story building where you only count part of one story and part of another story?
Well, one part of the building has another floor under it and part of it doesn't. I, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, but they're not on the same level, so they're not the same floor. And the two-thirds rule is talks about floors.
So in this example, the lighter shaded, the lighter shaded area would be that red hatched box that Richard was showing.
Yeah, but I'm saying the blue is on two different levels.
Right, as it was in that example that Richard showed.
Yeah, they're not the same floor. And so how do you, when it mentions floor in the two-thirds rule, how do you justify using two different floors?
Well, and I, I did copy the exact language in the way, what I think is most relevant reads on this, it says the total development square footage for a structure greater than eighteen feet in height shall not be greater than the, than permitted construction, than permitted for single-story construction. So if you apply that straight up here, it works as long as the math is right, as Justine kind of called out, and um, even if we, you know, had a little discussion on total development square footage versus floor area or whatever. If we, if it also works on the math, taking out the garage and the porch, then it still meets what's written in that section of the code. It's, it's at least as far as I'm just trying to read it as strictly as I can.
Well, all right, so let me weigh in here. That first sentence that you just read, as I read it, is simply trying to say that there's a, there's a standard for total development square footage that can't be exceeded depending on lot size. And just because you have a two-story house, it doesn't mean you get to have more total development square footage, because it says that, that, that the total development square footage for a structure greater than eighteen feet shall not exceed that permitted for a single-story construction. So in other words, going up doesn't get you anything. That's all that's really trying to say. The next sentence just says, and this is, this is the only one we're working on. Any portion of the structure above eighteen feet in height shall not exceed two-thirds of the first floor area. That's it. That's the whole thing that we're, we're, we're stretching out, right? Except that you have another version over in the municipal code, which says similar, but not exactly the same. It says the second floor area plus the area of vaulted ceilings above eighteen feet in height shall not exceed two-thirds of the first floor area. All right? So what the city has tried to do, what the planning staff has tried to do is meld those two, using the concept of the second floor as, as in the municipal code, and the concept of the floor area is used in the, in the LIP and saying, okay, if it's above eighteen feet, or if it's, if it's got a floor beneath it, then it counts for the purposes of the two-thirds rules. Uh, that's the way I understand it. Have I got that right, Richard?
Yes, you are correct.
Hey, so how do you?
Yes.
Yes.
So, oh, does that answer the question? You can have two different floors on two different levels and call them the same floor?
Well, it's more that do, for each section of the house, how many levels are in the section you're standing in? Whether or not the level you're standing in, is it a different height than the area where you step into where there's greater than eighteen feet? So it's not really like a, a floor of the concept where you're walking across at the same elevation. It's more what's the construction like exactly where you're standing? So it's, it's not really like a first floor, a second floor, but just the level you're on.
You have houses that could be under eighteen feet that are a total cube. Now, that would not be allowed because there's two floors. They're a total cube. First floor is the same size as the second floor. You're saying that doesn't count? It does. We don't allow those.
We're not talking about that here, though. We've got a multi-story structure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. A two-story building where the first floor is the same as the second floor. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. A two story building where the first floor is the same as the second floor. How about it's under 18 feet?
What, what staff is, is saying, if I understand it correctly, and look, first of all, you've got one sentence in, in the LIP, you've got a slightly different sentence than the municipal code. When they, when, when the LIP was written, I think they looked at the municipal code and said, well, I can't quite understand that. I'm going to make it simpler, but I don't know. You can, you can try to, to, to merge the two together. But you've only got one sentence really that you're dealing with that, you know? Plus the fact that these documents weren't written by people who were skilled in, in legislative draftsmanship, right? And, and so the problem that I think you're having trouble with, with Steve and you're uncomfortable with is the fact that there's got to be a process of interpretation. The, the most, the most specific and detailed statute I can think of is the Internal Revenue Code. It's absolutely specific and carefully done with subsections and everything looks back to everything else. And notwithstanding that, the Treasury Department is constantly putting out interpreted bulletins. And, you know, oh, okay, in this circumstance, we're going to do it this way. And that circumstance, we're going to do it this other way. All that's happened here is that staff over the years has developed this process of saying, okay, when houses are stepped down the hill, this is the way we're going to look at it. And I'm, what they're telling you is that's the way we have consistently applied it in the past. And, and that's why we're applying it that way to this project. And, and I, I don't know how you get beyond that. I mean, I don't.
I'm not sure how you get beyond it, other than to make sure that moving forward, that we continue to do the same thing. That's, look, it's, it's, it's just a matter of consistency. It's all I'm trying to.
Believe me, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I couldn't agree with you more. I'm, I'm very high on consistency and predictability. And, and that's why when, you know, years ago, when the staff initiated the, the quality control project where everybody would meet and review the projects and make sure that every project was being treated. We're trying to make sure that everybody, every project was trying to be treated the same way. And that's, that's all I see going on here. Uh, it's, it's, it's not mysterious to me.
Um, I, I've got this, I beat this up enough.
All right. So now, um, I'm sure you want to talk about overall size. Would you like to start or would somebody else like to start?
Well, I mean, you know, here is, and this is more of a, I don't know if this is going to make a difference in this project. Okay? But, but here's where I'm sort of coming from. I mean, you know, over a year, years and years, people in Malibu have done what they could to try and keep this community rural. All right? Uh, and they wrote stuff in the general plan that sort of said, you know, we're going to, we're going to avoid suburbanization and try and, you know, keep our community a little bit different. And I think that is what's made this community as valuable as it is. I mean, if I wanted to live in big houses, I could have moved to Beverly Hills. All right? But that's not what we've done here. We've sort of created a community that says you've got reasonable sized houses and it accommodates a rural definition, whatever the heck that is. Now, back to David's comment, it's going to change. There's no doubt in my mind. I mean, like we keep, nobody's going back to what we built in 1930 or 1950 or whatever the hell the date was. Uh, it, it's over time, houses are going to get larger. My only concern has been, I don't want to wake up one morning and have 7,000, 8,000 square foot houses built all around me. All right? I mean, that, that evolution is going to take place, but it should take place over a period of time. Now, with that said, there are three members of the city council who basically ran on a platform that said, we're going to try and maintain the rural character of our community. And I believe I got put on the planning commission to try and help support that process that says, you know, I mean, whether I'm right or I'm wrong in terms of all the decisions I make, I do believe that over, over time, I have also tried to support a rural perspective of what we've got here. Uh, so my concern is, look, this is a large house. All right? And, you know, this was a 2,900 square foot house when it began. It's now a, you know, 60s some thousand square feet. You know, if you got the, the 50,000 or 59,000 foot house plus the garage, you're up to 64, 67. Uh, this is not a small, a small house. And the problem that I have is once you start building that inside the community, the next time we have a house being built, that will fit into the average that everybody will use to say, well, look, this is what the average size is, right? We starting to build a bigger one. So, so I look. I'd like to get some of the other commissioners thoughts and says, you know, is, is, are they concerned with this? If they're not, I will let it ride. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm opposed or concerned with this trend that says we're going to start big, building bigger and bigger houses. Uh, cause once you start, you can't go back. That's it, Richard, or I mean, John, Chris, David, anybody?
Yeah, I've got a couple of remarks to make on that because, because I understand where you're coming from. And unfortunately, the, the, the city council, somewhere along the line, the process is broken down because the, this is not the first time when there is, where the staff has recommended, you know, this meets the code, you ought to be approved. And the majority of the, of the, or at least a portion of the, of the commission says, no, 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 we don't think that that's, that's appropriate. Now, what, what ought to be happening is it seems to me that if you feel the way you feel, that you ought to go back to the city council and you ought to say, look, we're, we've got a process now that is broken down because, because when it gets down to the point where these people have spent, any applicant, I'm sure these people as well, have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars getting to this point. And now we say, uh, no, this is, this is the wrong size or it's not. Something happened to my microphone. Can you still hear me?
I got you.
Um, yes, no?
Yes.
Now, I can't hear anybody.
We can hear you.
Keep going. Now I'm hearing you now. Okay. Um, so anyway, I, it, it, the, the, the process ought to work where, where staff carries out the direction of the city council and gets down to a point, makes a recommendation and, and, and you guys who are appointees at the majority of the city council, you say, yeah, that's what, that's what's worked out. But what the way it's working now is that staff is making recommendations based upon what their understanding of the, of the direction set. And it's being rejected by you. That, it's terrible.
That's not true.
No, wait a minute, wait, 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 one at a time.
I'm not rejecting it. It's a question.
Oh, okay. All right. But it has, in the past, it has been in the past rejected. And, and staff recommendations have been, have been, have been overturned or disregarded.
Go to your suggestion.
Just one at a time.
When we go to your suggestion, we did exactly what you suggested. We went to the city, the city council came to us and said, guys, take a look at this and give me a better idea. And we tried to do that. And when it went back to the city council and they fell apart like a bunch of overcooked chickens, they did nothing. All right? They did not change the direction. They did not tell us to not consider large houses, to not be concerned about, they said nothing. So I understand what you're saying. I wish we had better direction. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I, I'm done.
I, I'm just saying that, that the way it's doing now is, is, is so enormously wasteful of time and energy and money of staff and applicants and everybody else.
I agree.
It is the worst possible.
I agree with you.
Deal with this problem. Okay. Comments? Secondly, secondly, the, this particular area has evolved over time. And, and like I say, I used to walk that, that, uh, that road, not every day, but most days. And, and, and watch those, those houses get built. There was a house, house next door is actually one I looked at and was thinking about buying at one time. But there are houses that are, that have gotten bigger and of a different design style than they were in the earlier days. It's true, the houses go, have gone bigger in the last 10 or 15 years. However, keep in mind the fact that, that you've heard the statistics from Richard, that most of the houses that are being fire rebuilds are either like for like or like for, like for like plus 10%. So that's not a huge change in the nature of, of this neighborhood that's coming about as a result of the fire. That the houses are going to be more or less the same size. It's not going to be there. It, it's going to be a little ratchet effect because you got the 10%, but it's not going to be a huge ratchet effect on, on the nature of the neighborhood. Thirdly, you got a situation where you guys are worried about neighborhood character and you got all the neighbors of this guy, of these people saying, yeah, we like this house. So as far as I'm concerned, that's fairly persuasive about neighborhood character. I'm done. John?
Well, I think what we were talking about before about being consistent. The situation was the city council decided on a house on Via Cerro, there was too big. They whacked it down 30%. And they brought this all up. You have to make, we have to make a finding that this is consistent with the neighborhood character. Okay? Now, where our neighborhoods, yeah, neighborhood character. But we've been told by our attorney, you can't use neighborhood standards as a method. So we, we are required, and this is what's been told to us. You gotta look at the neighborhood and decide it's consistent. Okay? Now, we have to have a consistent method to do that. And our method has been take the houses with a 500 feet, feet. But our staff has refused to come in ever and say this house is too big because they don't want to get involved in this decision. I assume we've never once had that happen. Okay? So the applicant comes up with the table. The applicant comes up with the, and if you look at this table, it says right on it, it's been tweaked. It's not the real numbers, it's been tweaked. So we have to be consistent in how you tweak it, but we aren't. And then we look at the map that they used. And if you eliminate the houses that are not within 500 feet, and we have consistently over the years, not counted flag driveways and these kinds of things as being development area. Uh, if you take those out, and these are rough numbers, but this will be the biggest house in the neighborhood. Will be, if you look at the table.
The issue is that the code allows that and neighborhood, it, the, the finding you have to make is whether the site plan review for height above 18 feet adversely affects neighborhood character. It doesn't, it actually doesn't say consistency. You can all make your own interpretation about what is an adverse impact. Um, and the, the code doesn't give any guidance about what you should consider with neighborhood character, but nowhere does it say anything about 500 feet. So that's, that's.
No, but, but I, I agree. It doesn't.
Over, over the commission's practice, but I just want to remind everybody that that's not codified and that different neighborhoods with different lot sizes, and especially in neighborhoods that are very mixed like this, you, you see all sorts of things in terms of different house sizes and, um, lot sizes. So it.
But it has been determined, it has been determined that we do not use FAR. Okay? That's.
That, that.
In cases.
This, this is for, is for to- total development square footage. The use of FAR is, is merely for comparison purposes. It, some, some people find it useful. You're correct. It's not a standard. And neither is a 500 foot radius for determining neighborhood character. It's not a standard.
Okay. So what I want to get away from, and I think this is what Steve was talking about on the two thirds rule, is we need definitions. And when one of our reasoning is the neighbors like it, that's not consistent with the way you evaluate things. Now, there's maybe plenty of reasons, maybe all the neighbors want bigger houses. I don't know. Or they really like the, the person. But we're not in the business of who we like and who we don't like.
John?
We should, just wait, 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 I got David down there.
I, 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 I mean, I'm finding this somewhat incredible to have an entire neighborhood supporting a project and saying that, that is not relevant to whether the project is consistent with neighborhood character. What, what is more relevant to the character of a neighborhood than the people who live there?
Okay, so David.
I, I, I'm.
John, wait. David, go ahead.
And there is no standard of how you judge size, what's too big, too little. It's in the eyes of the beholder. Completely agree that we have a mandate to prevent mansionization, commercialization, suburbanization. That's in the eyes of the beholder too. There is no single standard that is, has been used by this planning committee, commission to determine that. So my last 30 years is no more or less relevant than any other way you want to slice or dice things. Uh, whether it's specifically within 500 feet or not, maybe yes, maybe no. This would not be the largest house from what I looked at in the neighborhood. And I just think that we all have to carry our responsibility of wean the neighborhood character. However, we're going to determine that and hopefully with some predictability. So the person who comes next will have a sense of what we're doing. Uh, but just to all of a sudden, out of the blue say, well, it fits every other criteria, but I think subjectively it's bigger than I would want it to be. That provides no guidance to anybody.
Uh, I just wanted, uh, your, your point about the neighbors like it is what I'm talking about. What happens if you had 20 neighbors that didn't like it?
I would be relevant. I think that.
Think that's relevant? So, so if they don't put, it shouldn't be relevant. You have the right to develop your property consistent with the codes and the general plan, et cetera. Not whether your neighbors like you or not. Okay? I had a neighbor next door to me that everybody hated. Okay? He moved out, they put in a big house. Okay? But if he was living there, they wouldn't. That's not the way we should operate.
Okay. I, I, I agree with you, John, that, that.
That's not what I'm saying, John.
No, no, I, I know. I agree with you that there should be a more objective standard. The problem is that we haven't been given any guidance other than neighborhood character, a completely undefined term. Now, you guys in the last couple of years have, have insisted that, well, that means house size. And, and that's, you know, we're all free to judge neighborhood character based upon our own judgment of what it is. You guys think it's house size? I don't think it's house size. But, but the fact is that until the city council gives us some guidance, we are going to be in this endless treadmill of, of applicants coming forward because they've been told by staff, this meets the code, coming up at the end of a multi hundred thousand dollar process and saying, no, 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 you know, we think it's too big or no, 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 we think it's too small. It's, it's just the worst possible way to run this process. And that doesn't solve anything. I'm not helping you. I'm putting it back on the, in the shoulders of the city council. I, you know, I admit, Steve said, they, they, they kind of saw the elephant and decided they didn't want to address that issue. But until they do, we're stuck. John?
Well, I, I, I'm looking at it the other way. They addressed it. They did it. And then they stuck us with it. And nobody came along and said, ignore the city council. Uh, they, they just never resolved it.
I just want to remind you that the council has had a chance to give you specific direction on numerous occasions and has not said what you just said. They took an action on one specific project with very site-specific circumstances. And they have not said, do this for every other project.
No, but they did send us the direction to review the way we do it and send them our suggestions, which we did, and they continued the item. Okay? Uh, so the last action of the city council was to tell us to come up with a solution. And then they put it. So right now there is no solution other than what they have done.
And, and the standards.
But in the meantime, in the meantime, we have an applicant in front of us now with a specific project that we needed to cite of.
Yes. And, and, and we're at that point. We just turned one, nine o'clock. One of the, one of the problems with a, a light agenda is that the, is that the conference can go on forever. Uh, and, but just, Steve, you want to make one point? Go ahead.
John, and, and, and John, I, you know, I, I've sort of followed your lead or agreed with you. I, I think you're right. We have got no direction on what the hell we're supposed to do. And, and in this case, you know, as, as the, the comments from the neighbors may win the day. Uh, when they, you know, in my, my world, this, I would, I would not living, living in a 3,000 square foot house and waking up in the morning and having a 7,000 square foot house sitting next to me is not my idea of keeping the character of the neighborhood, but apparently the people who live in this neighborhood don't care. So I got a problem.
Well, if I, if I could, if I could throw some ideas out there.
Is it, I, I just, one, one remark. I'm building, uh, uh, building a 2,200 square foot house. And, and I've got a lot of big houses in my neighborhood and I think it's great. And it doesn't bother me at all. Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. Um, I just, uh, in listening to Commissioner Wild's thoughts on this, it kind of got me thinking in terms of, um, just kind of the counter to the perspective that he shared, which is, I get the concept of construction from 1990 till now. It's trended to, uh, you know, to larger homes, et cetera. And that makes sense. And I'm not going to argue that. But what concerns me is what about those of us like, like yourself, Commissioner Chair Jennings, that's choosing to live in a smaller home, more like that of the 1950s? Is the action of, you know, not respecting the code that says we have to take neighborhood character into account? Is that going to adversely affect those that live in smaller homes? My personal opinion is that it can. What I'm upset about is that we got to the brink of a, of a good, healthy conversation on this. And then we walked away from it. And so we never finished really talking through as a community led by the city council. led by the city council on thoughts that were put down on paper, in writing, for consideration and really hashed this out. It remains open. And I am concerned about our, our role being one that just says, okay, we're not going to take into account this neighborhood character concept at all. We're going to let that fall as it falls. I think that would be an error on, on my role as well, because that could have significant impacts, which apparently was that quite a bit more when this, this concept was introduced. So that's where my head is lying on this.
Let me, let me, let me make one comment. I don't think anybody's suggesting that the concept of neighborhood character should be ignored. It was never ignored. Staff has always considered, but they've considered it in the concept of bulk mass and height. So that was the, this, if, it was not a very precise standard, but that was the standard that was used. And primarily, it was looking at the portion above eighteen feet. And what did the portion of eighteen feet have to do with its impact on the neighbors in terms of view, in terms of being overshadowed by, by a large structure next door? That was what was always looked at and was never ignored. Now, the, the, the problem that I have is that this, this change in focus to mere numbers of size is not one that's productive of a good result for either the community or individual applicants. And admittedly, that, 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 that emphasis on size, bulk and mass was something that, that didn't have much, much flavor to it, but, or much specificity to it. But staff always was able to talk to the applicants at the earlier stages and say, look, this isn't going to work. You better scale this down in a different way.
Yeah, and.
There, there was always the chance when it got to us that we were going to see it differently. But it was looked at and we never got to see a house, just like we never get, as John complained, we never get to see a house that's larger than the total development square footage allowances. No, because staff beats people up to the fact that, that, you know, before they, they ever get to that point. So remarks, John?
No, fair enough. I just want to finish. I, I want to finish my thought if I may.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. But I, I hear what you're saying, bulk size and mass. Is, those are subjective terms as well. So all I can use as a metric to look at that and evaluate each project as fairly as I can is the TDSF as a starting point or the size of the residence. I think those are both fair. And I think this applicant has done a great job of, of clarifying that kind of distinction between, hey, I'm going to do like-for-like. I'm going to look at what county has on these residents. They put the numbers up there, they stated their facts. Now, it's how those are perceived. When I look at the averages across this, which again, we don't have a freaking standard for how to do this, but all I can think is, is let's go after more of an average. An average, this house is roughly two-point-two-five times the size of its, of its neighboring homes, not TDSF homes, home-to-home. If you look at TDSF versus homes, if we're going to go kind of TDSF versus county data, it's up to what, maybe two-point-eight times the size. There are only two larger residences in that roughly five hundred, seven hundred, whatever radius foot you want to draw around this structure. And those two are the only two. Everything else is smaller, some significantly smaller, down to thirteen hundred square feet. So I come back to my opinion that if we, if we neglect this aspect of the code, we could be impacting the majority of residents around this property. And I agree to Commissioner Wild's point, this is almost a ridiculous argument because we have such a large percentage of everyone running in and saying, I like this home, I want it to go forward. I still want to call out a caution because our code still has this in there. And I got to respect that in some form. So, you know, I, I'm torn. I get where the arguments are. I, I respect the family and their wishes here. I'm just recognizing we don't have clear guidance on this. And all I've got is what's in front of me, which is, I'm, I'm doing my best to interpret.
Let me, let me make one suggestion. I'll get to you, John. But let me make one suggestion. When, when the architect made his presentation, Mr. Wordheim made his presentation, he put up a chart. And he said he didn't want to talk about it unless it was raised in discussion. Is there any interest on the part of the commissioners in calling him up and asking him to talk further about it, or is that your dog, Steve?
I gotta let my dog out. I'm just going to open the door right there.
Jeff, in the meantime.
But we have to stop talking.
We have, we have to stop.
Oh. Maybe mine isn't here.
All right, sorry.
It's okay, John.
What you said makes some sense, except there's one problem, and this is a question of Bonnie. The staff never once has prepared a comparison, not once, okay? And as far as I know, never once have they said in writing to us in a staff report, this house is too big. They always say it, they only use, only use the maximum TDSF. You can build at the maximum TDSF, because they don't have guidelines either. But that isn't solving the problem. If you can say, you know, you got these, these lots where it's all cliff, but the guy's got twenty acres. And you say, okay, you have twelve, eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two feet. That makes no sense, okay? But the staff has not ever once counseled us, this house is too big for a neighborhood. As long as it's within the TDSF. So we're sitting here, the county, the city council turned down a house, maybe because the neighbors didn't like the guy, but they turned down a house that was under the TDSF and they sliced it by a third, okay? And then they said, you guys take up the problem. Well, we can't go back to what, basically what you're suggesting is, whatever the staff tells them they can do, when it comes to us, we shouldn't be able to, to weigh in. That's what are their job.
Trevor, you have your hand up.
The, the council didn't slice down the size of the house. The applicant voluntarily reduced the size of the house in that case. So you don't have a decision.
No, 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 no.
I was there.
No, no, I was there.
Actually cut the house down. But in any case, we've been through this discussion many times down this road. I mean, maybe we want to see where we're at with a motion.
Well, I, I, it's nine-ten. But I do want to go back to the idea that, that Mr. Wordheim did refer to a cable that he had some input. Is there any interest in having him come up and, and, and further expound on that issue? Or are you, are you all ready to move forward? If, if I don't see a hand waving, say, yeah, bring him up, I'm going to say, okay, fine. We'll do, now move to see if we can find a motion. I think we've, we've talked to this thing pretty much to death. And so I'm, I'm looking to see if there's a motion from, from somebody, and I don't see anybody but me talking. I've got David with his hand up.
I move that we approve the report.
I'm sorry.
That would be staff's recommendation.
You move the staff recommendation?
Yes.
I'll second that for consideration.
Okay, with a further discussion of the, of the motion, I mean, we've, we've kind of done it, but if there's further discussion.
Well, I, I, I do think that one of our main problems here is the city council. And perhaps they should decide.
Well, they will. They will.
Yeah. Okay, so further discussion. Hearing none. Patricia, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Maza?
No.
Commissioner Yurin? Commissioner Yurin?
I hear you, I hear you. I'm going to say yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
I'll vote no as well.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. That concludes the items on our agenda. Is there, John?
I'm over your turn.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second?
Do we have to call the roll on that one? Can we do that by acclamation? Acclamation?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Now we got to figure out how to get out of this.
Good luck.
Just leave the meeting.
Leave the meeting.